But yeah, proponent for the regulation and in the past we've looked at sign permits. Some of you might have been here when we looked at Mr. Moore's sign that he put up on. Staff did was provide two other cities to compare and contrast what their ordinance look like, look like. The first ones come out, which for the most part, they are silent on the majority of their signage as it applies to private property. There's deals mainly with business type signs and they actually go into a lot of detail on what businesses can and cannot have within the current law. So it's fairly interesting to read. And the other one was Monterey who recently updated their sign ordinance. And the motivation for them was really twofold. One, the regulation was at the date as well. And they wanted to look at the potential of not allowing signs on public property anymore. You might have seen during the last election where you go down Del Monte and it's just peppered with signs on both sides of the road.
I don't want to hear it.
Yep, and they, they wanted to look to eliminate that. And ultimately they did when we revised their sign ordinance. So the, the big focus for us would be to review it for consistency. But I think most of the focus is going to be on paragraph twenty twenty, or I'm sorry, uh, two twenty. And it's titled Signs Not Otherwise Regulated. And it basically focuses on location of signs, whether they should be freestanding or attached, the number of signs that you can have and the size to it and time limitations. So before we discuss those items, I wanted to allow our lawyer, Alex Orca, to provide any information that you would like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a reminder, this is information only, we won't be taking any action tonight on this. It's just to sort of socialize the concept, discuss the need for a revision. Um, the other thing to consider is, is if, if you choose to move forward with this eventually, I will provide the framework for what you can and can't regulate as far as signs are concerned. Um, but you folks will direct what should be. For instance, Monterey, the big direction there was public property. So they didn't get too much into the signs on, on private property was they, they just had a lot of complaints about public property. So the scope of how far you want to take this is entirely up to you. Uh, and that's looking down the road. But for tonight, it's just to socialize, discuss and talk about the need to revise.
The powerful part of a sustainability effort, Monterey as well. We were hardly seeing all the signs with great use of that. I know that was also part of the discussion.
Thank you, Alex. So what I would like to do is open it up to the members of the commission. If you got any comments or.
I'll kick off real quick. Uh, I was excited in this couple of times now. Um, you know, going back to the sign overs during the last election, it, it, you know, it was crazy. That's been up and down a couple of times. Um, got me looking into this a little bit afterwards. This is what is and obviously our, 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 um, went to the, uh, what the California League of Cities. There's all sorts of great information there. And they have a whole thing on signage and political signage in particular. And, um, you can go there and find the case of Baldwin versus Redwood City, which, uh, basically says, you know, it's First Amendment right, which I think their support for it, uh, a lot of people wanted to put up more signs. I'm getting way out of it right now because they put up way more signs and allowed and refused to take them down because it's First Amendment right. And I agree with you, you know, we need to look at this. He's kind of making a point by leaving his up and they came to work. The, in the Baldwin versus Redwood Cities, they basically said, yeah, it is right. You're right, private property, uh, hard to regulate. They didn't come up with regulations. They said basically it's eight square feet or sixteen square feet for anyone sign, which is coincidentally exactly what Monterey is not doing. They just, that's real. And that's again, this is the one that has, that's a limit that has to still be court test. The court said you can't, you just, you can't put arbitrary limits on it, but you can't put some generous reading of them. And so they came up with eight square feet though, sixteen square feet for anyone sign. That seems to be what people are, in the complete side count, seems to be what people are starting to adopt. Because once you get, you don't go back and be tested in court because it's already been tested. So I would say we should consider moving in that direction because being what challenges are eight square feet, there's no way to understand that. Last thing we need is to be in court over some sort of signs. So, um, that, that's all I'll say for now. It's the kind of, that's what I, that I need to move getting to this. You know, like, okay, what's, you know, what is the current law? That's, that was what I've got to dig up, you know? So, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Anyone else?
I, I agree with that. Uh, I think there's a major problem with signs, they were not Monterey does. And I wonder whether Monterey putting a limit on whether it will make them move somewhere else where they can do that. So would supposedly do something, adopt something like that.
And according to see that, uh, support Monterey in keeping it off the public. I guess some of the issues is maybe the Alex thing. This is, I wasn't clear to me that the easements, that was another issue. Our permanent subject, you can't put them in easement and I wasn't clear easements are public property. Clearly if you're moving down the old Tremont, those little islands, that's public property. I'm not sure if easements are public property. We might have to get that as well. That's something. I'm sorry?
Depending on who owns underlying grant, ground event, whether or not an easement has an scope.
Okay, you're on my head. Okay.
I think the, I think it's a four foot setback from the street also running into that problem that.
Right, but is that your advice, that private property or is it public property? Well, that's.
I think we should, it's been enforced before, there's got to be four feet back. I think we should maintain that.
Okay.
Um, I looked in here, I don't know if it's even putting in here under lighting. Whether it's some relative to the efficient, I believe efficient lighting now.
Oh, it'll be like efficient lighting.
Sodium filled, just things going on like a mile and forty five record or whatever. Whether that could be put in there, I don't know that it was worth it.
Well, I mean, if you're thinking it, it might be, because it's already very thin about lighting restrictions on it. But when you, it's a simple enough that in there that it would be, uh, you could require some sort of, you know, efficient lighting.
But I think businesses are going to go for cheap stuff. Maybe we might put in a sodium filled thing when they can buy an alley in the end.
Yeah, exactly.
Other than that, I, I don't know, a big major problem, first one, the four ordinance to help. We might, you know, have to think about signage for those guys out there. But I think a lot of the signage applies from the Cali delos, uh, wouldn't apply it there. I have seen problems or business that. My two cents?
Just a question? Yeah, go ahead, one to go first.
Just real quickly, uh, to, uh, Commissioner Jack Shaw's first point, that was my understanding also for the, um, the curb essentially. Therein begins the property line and I read in here that it's at least five feet from the beginning property line. Does that indicate a lot also or is that just, would be easy to clarify? From either side, either a case a lot? Um, so I'm reading that as nine feet from the curb essentially. Unless I'm confused, I think a lot of people may be. The other thing, I was in here again, but still have page there with me. Just the writing wage, I mean, I know we'll have plenty of time to edit and revise this, but, um, page four granting, um, seventeen twenty-five nine point one hundred. This third of sentence, guide wires, like exposed strikeback sign structures, et cetera, et cetera. Could actually be guide wires, not why. But otherwise I see the ordinance as very straightforward and consistent in the ways of, uh, public safety, preventing distraction from drivers, um, not creating light, um, in the neighborhood overall. More, um, intervention of our neighbors. So I see it as very thorough and, uh, consistent with anything I've seen in, with any other city. Between having used these regulations, being older and installing signage, uh, square footage, uh, proportion of size to the storefronts or property. I see it very straightforward in the areas I wanted to.
Well, to your, your question, what is the official setback? Is it four feet, five feet or nine feet?
I'm not sure. I mean, I think that would be, in every jurisdiction, it's different. You need to write down.
Well, Jeremy's had a question and I always thought it was four feet.
He's talking about that because it says.
Four feet from the back of the curb is the property line. Okay, so I was getting the impression that I think maybe are, that as long as it's on your property, my court will issue a return.
Yeah, I think.
Property streets five at least five feet from any property line. Something like that.
Which, and, and that aspect of it could be potentially problematic because each property line is different. There's no standard line from the street, for example. Some houses, it's ten feet back from the street begins their property line. In some cases it's, it's four feet or three feet.
I think four is a minimal.
Yeah, that, that might be. And I do know that, uh, Lucido surveyors has done probably the majority of surveying within the city. And that's what we see is there's, there's a lot of variance based on the different types of properties that are in the city. But there's no, no standard, which like I said, could make this problematic if we maintain any ordinance that is five feet from a property line. You know, do we have each property, you want to do a survey and find the property?
Keeps, uh, the officers out, like they're taking measures like.
Right.
Well, and I think, I, I want to say again, in reading through all this stuff, what the preponderance of, and you said currently from, from this review, but it seems like the preponderance of all this is to support the homeowner's First Amendment rights. So council, yeah, all right, well, that sign was fenced, either it was fenced. Our ordinance says that's not allowed, but why not? I mean, you know, it says property, it says fenced, if, like, if I can't put a sign out there. And so I think that as I read through here, so yeah, I can easily be careful, but if, you know, if you want to understand what, what the county wants or not, I want to make sure we, we all to that, uh, that over provisional, you know, the absence of the business. Well, we've established the, you know, the case law.
I, you know, I, I think the big one is putting houses in pretty good shape. Some of these other candidates in the new show. The one thing that kind of struck me too is it really nothing that addresses content, I think. And you know, you gotta be very careful about that. Be discriminatory, but you know, nothing really addresses something that might be off hold or whatever. Not a complex thing like that, I don't know. I mean, it's not a real issue. I think that's the one thing, other than, uh, I've heard of, um, some of the content, some of the content, I think. And I think we did have an issue with one of the recent elections, one of the, um, center, where they were, um, I had to, you know, so had, they all fixed up.
Didn't, well, this, um, this they won't get it.
Well, I think there was some issues, um, I think. But just by.
Yeah, with the builder, that probably we can certainly, we, we can write that. I mean, it's already, it's not what, uh, it's up to that. I mean, I, it's not everybody, I think, that.
And, and that is consistent with the other cities. So that, that aspect of it, I think it's solid that we can prohibit signs on city on property. Okay, thank you.
Couple of, uh, maybe a couple of questions, couple of comments. Um, but first of all, I, um, looked this over was what, have there been triggering, triggering events other than it's twenty years old, this ordinance? Have there been any triggering events that are forcing us?
Several, actually.
What's that? Yeah, what, what were those?
Well, the last election, there was issues about where the sign was placed. And so the signs got pulled up, uh, the city department, they were in the wrong place. Um, sign, the size of sign, things, where it's being violated, so it, you know, again, that's arbitrary number. And, but it was there and so, you know, as long as it's in the org, as long as it's in the organs, we, you know, should enforce it. And we change it because it needs to change. Um, so I think those are probably the biggest placement on and then the number that each word feet basically is two signs. A lot of people want to put one, two signs in the election season. And by the way, I was wondering if you can, I can't remember. I know most of the cities have like a sixty day prior, ten day after and you didn't have that. I thought we did, I was trying to find it, okay, so.
Sixteen and five days.
Sixteen and five, okay.
That's what you were saying, even more current than the last election period. There are signs throughout the neighborhood to support, um, causes that some are very passionate about and big men around in excess of those sixty days. But it specifies that, uh, they can be posted no sooner than sixty days before a scheduled event or whatnot and must be removed five days after for a total of sixty-five to use to generate cost.
That's kind of like, is that right?
That's for any of those signs then that apply in that chapter, that paragraph.
I don't know if the language specifies active visit.
It talks to including, but not limited to votes expressing political, religious, sociological viewpoints to include elections.
So it does cover. Is there like a Monterey was specific before the day of the election and then after the day of the election? So there's a way for it, so that might as well be within that, as well, I think, right in that verb.
Yeah, Monterey has a different one.
Sure.
Sure. A, a forty-seven day total. Um, so it, and, and they really go after, and I think we'll have to do the same too, because you can't regulate based on content, um, temporary time, which are forty-seven days before or after, you got the forty-seven.
From the point you put it up, you're not, not in the election, you're going to say.
Right, it's not, not towards the election, it's just forty-seven days. Of course it's stricken, uh, regulations that say you can't put it up so many days before an election. They, they, they've upheld ones where it's, it's a free.
So the Monterey, they, they.
Monterey is now, now it's just forty-seven days, temporary.
Okay. Then I was, I was a bit of a, was he?
I mean, it was just in December.
Yeah, yeah, I'll put you on. Okay.
What were these signs that, because there's no, more than Del Rio, what were they on, are political?
Well, I'm all over non-commercial.
I don't think it matters, I guess to some point, I don't think it matters because it's not the content, it's the fact that it's a temporary sign and you can do it.
Because I know there's really, either the signs have been there for four months at least.
Yeah.
I don't care where your political view is, it just is sort of almost crashing.
Well, I think after a while, yeah.
Tag, tag you as a better move for it.
Well, yeah, I know there was some discussion with some people breaking them down and like, I don't think, I'm like, well, maybe what we need to do is show them what, well.
Yeah.
No, here's a question, is there a, before we go back out though? That was, I know it's, I, I know, I, I mean, I can see how this plays out.
Right, you know, in, in talking to a preliminary, we, we, we had the discussion of taking inside for a day and put it back out.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the city had discretion with regard to enforcement of that. And if it went inside for, in the garage for two hours and back out, we would take the fact that that's now that's permanent sign. So you'd be able to exercise discretion in enforcement. Is there a panacea for every situation?
Yeah.
Probably not. So that, therein lies the city's discretion for enforcing what we're saying. Is it reasonable to cite someone for a permanent sign when it was really, you know, temporary forty-seven days or sixty-five days that went in the garage for two hours? Part of all of this is discretion.
And, uh, this may be a moot point, um, but I personally experienced with this. Although vehicles are mobile and non-stationary, not so permanent, um, I don't see anything here as far as advertising for businesses on vehicles despite the size of it. Should there be some regulation added in accordingly? Because what's to say, um, uh, for vehicles, uh, leads to trailers that are parked for X amount of time, leads to, you know, parade floats, what have you. If I have, I'm allowed to have a sign that advertises my business, which I do, well, why can't I have the, whatever other cause I believe in last week inside my trailer, which is parked there, you know, all the time, over the, in eight hours a day. So you need something like that, you need four, I would like to see.
I think it's a great point because I, I'd have to research that. Comes to my mind that's maybe regulated in the vehicle code or something like that, but that would be a great.
It's, it's not addressed within our sign ordinance currently. Uh, in terms of enforcement, it, it could be enforced under the vehicle code or seventy-two hours, that vehicle or trailer or whatever it has to be moved. So I can see where that might eliminate maybe some aspects of it, but it is not addressed.
Maybe the nature of the sign. I don't know, we might get too deep into that because how many people have the bumper sticker that says vote for someone, so.
Yeah.
Now you're going to get, now it's getting over.
You get these, it's a slippery slope, doesn't it?
Yeah, somebody goes, well, that's one of those, you know? You gotta take it off, you gotta move it. So I think we have to just.
If we have a larger problem.
Yeah, we have a problem just to play a seventy-two hour, you know, which is forced moving the rear.
Yeah, and the reason they did that was because they wanted to allow people to express themselves mainly on the indoor wide bay area there where you'll often see handheld signs you drive by on Del Monte. They wanted to allow citizens to continue to do that, but they wanted to kind of regulate a little bit. And I think a piece of that was they were taking away the ability to put a sign on public property, but we want to allow, we want to allow citizens to at least express their viewpoint from a public location. And I think that's how they, if they have it, they're going to take it with them.
It's really in fact, in the system with what I'm reading, Hall Ordinance and the other city's ordinances where there's potential for that, uh, disrupting normal safe traffic flow, there's a distraction of drivers, there are a certain proximity to traffic signals. Um, there are even statements, interactive statements like honk when you're swarmed, which, you know, vehicles should only be honking in an emergency situation, uh, and, uh, driver don't really do. So there are some existing seats of that side there.
Well, it's, uh, it's pretty true, or it's actually, some of the tax preparers, what, uh, people can't report the signs. And we, we don't address that either. I think we have it on the corner. And, uh, pretty much.
And there are limitation signs.
And when it's passed, we've had the statute literally, if we have to move into seaside. I don't know where that applies, but it's been enforced before.
Doesn't, you kind of pivot it away from you there. Did you have anything else that you?
A whole bunch. No, that's, uh, that's very good, all of that. And that helps, uh, with some of the other things I had down here. Um, on a tactical, um, note, what would we, what would be the ballpark for a permit? How much would it cost somebody to get a permit for a sign? Is it, do we have any ideas about that yet?
You talking about for, like in their, in their yard?
Yeah, well, there are, there are all kinds of stipulations that are about, you will need a permit. And some you don't have to go to the planning commission, some you do. There's a bunch of yes, no's, yes, no's and some that don't need anything. I'm thinking what's the, how do we charge, what kind of level, how does that work?
Is there a fee schedule already?
Yeah, from the schedule.
Well, there, there is for permanent signs.
Gotcha.
And, and really what we're talking about here are the temporary signs. And I think if we somewhat follow what Monterey is doing and treat the, those type of signs on personal property as temporary, then they're exempt from any fees being paid.
Yeah, because my, my thought with bringing that up is I want to minimize, whatever we can do to minimize any restrictions at all. We want to have the absolute least amount of things that we want, including the lowest possible fee schedules and zero if possible, where, where people can, if it's people or businesses that can express exactly what they want, you know, come to Bob's for a hamburger or whatever. I'm, I think we, it's part of our duty to protect that. It says it right in here as well. It says that part of our, our, our charter from the city standpoint is to protect the rights. So I think that gets into that fee. Don't, don't let it, I think it should be as low as possible. That was my, that was my comment associated with how much would something like this cost?
Listening to San Francisco radio, you know, talking about fees to replace a garage door. The fee is almost as much as a garage door.
I agree. I agree with you a hundred percent.
The other thing I noticed in the, the, uh, Monterey ordinances that I liked was the chart, you know, the chart kind of thing that says, you know, either committed, either not committed. And they can carry over and, uh, up the schedule. If, if we're fair, then some of this stuff kind of gets lost with the legal ease and sometimes you have to really put, kind of, you, you unlock it.
Yeah, I, I like charts, okay.
Yeah, so my, my last comment is directly in line with that. And it, and it, and it has to do with, um, I'm, I'm a big fan of pictures, um, and so pictures.
Maybe intercourse.
Yeah, that's right, exactly. Um, pictures, um, anytime we can put a picture in or a chart or a table where it's really easy to use, uh, we should make, we should make every effort to do that, to, to put, um, here's, uh, and I know you can't, I know we have unusual property lines and things, things like that, but there should be a generalized picture. As long, there are exceptions, but as long as you're the drawing with the easements of, you know, four feet, clearly show if it's nine feet, you add them together or whether you go four feet, that's good. You're in from the curb or how it applies on the sides and the back and things like that. I think we could, I would be well served with a picture in there as the city council puts together, uh, what they're trying to do.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, you know, I, I think at some point, I'm going to worry about, you know, nine feet or five feet if it's, you know, eight and a half feet, man, you're too close, you know?
Yeah, well, you're making, you're making a lot of extra work, you're putting them in a bad spot.
Correct.
And it's, uh, when you, when the intent really is, like I said, when people express themselves in a reasonable manner, that's where I think these numbers came from, you know, these court cases.
Yeah.
You don't worry about it, you know? And if, if it's going to come down in sixty days or forty-seven days or whatever we've been on, you know, something like a permanent, so.
One of the problems that I've, we've run into in the past is the reasonable person, you know? We all, oh, that's it, but then it's one guy that comes up and does something way out of whack. This doesn't apply or we have the ability to call back and go.
Yeah, yeah.
So we mentioned a few things that sort of nitpick, but to know the other side, it's for that guy that isn't the reasonable person. The city has some recourse at that point.
Well, it needs to be codified. I mean, there, there needs to be something in there. And I think that's, you know, that's for, it needs something along the way, one hundred, it, it's, the limit is clear. They're maybe left there with the people, but if it's through the, that's the, you know, the courts and so you, you know, what can they account for? If someone puts up to a hundred square feet, or they put up a, yeah, eight foot sign, that's clear, that's not allowed. So, you know, it's, there's that work, that field work, but if, if I could, I, I'm just thinking, what is the mechanism? If we, it sounds like there might be some, you know, instances that you want to make some changes. What's the mechanism you do that by any, you know, you know, and I'm here, it's qualified by the code, state municipal codes, uh.
So what we would do is, is, uh, as we have with other, other code updates, is, uh, is take the, uh, general intent of, of the commission. So if we, for example, plan to revisit this at the next planning commission meeting, uh, staff can prepare, uh, in revision, uh, of the, of the existing ordinance with the comments you, you made here. I'm sure, uh, Alex has captured some of that, I'll, uh, uh, and bring that back through to you. And we would also, by the way, we would also have outside counsel, as Alex has pointed out, this is, this is a, uh, unique area of law.
We try to, Martin, Monterey, Martin Foster? Have a case?
You have the discretion, it's something that you like, it does.
Only the reason, let it, it's a nice thing, yeah, yeah, that's, that's something to.
that it's a nice thing, yeah, that's, that's something that you, that you can do. All right, and I do, now I've, I've generated a couple of extras here, those I'm apt to do. Um, along with the picture idea, I would strongly recommend props at meetings, and that means if you got three, it's amazing how quickly, when you go from feet, that's fairly straightforward. People can envision feet. When you start trying to think about what, how big is that, when you're talking about square feet, you quickly lose the sizes. So I would recommend props for the meetings. Bring them in and say, this is eight square foot, this is a hundred and twenty-eights, whatever, you probably don't want that one. Uh, but I'd recommend props as well as pictures for, for any future, um, reviews. And while, uh, our city manager was talking, um, thank you, Dino, I thought about two things. First of all, maybe not today, we'd certainly want to know your opinion on this. And I asked a question before you came in about what's the, um, uh, what's the forcing function here? Have there been incidents? Or we having problems? Why aren't we even looking at this other than it's twenty years old and, um, perhaps there, and perhaps there's some problems with it? Those would be the forcing functions, so, um, it's your choice whether you offer your thoughts today.
I, I, I would just say that as part of the sign ordinance, there's an enforcement piece.
Yeah.
And that's paragraph, uh, sixty.
Mm-hmm.
And it basically says that any type of infraction here will be handled as other zoning issued building safety regulations are enforced.
Yep. Yeah, so jumping, jumping past this, our city manager, excuse me, um, another thing I recommend is a formal review of any infractions that our police departments have to enforce. They have case instances of things, we just, I'd like to know what they are, um, for information's sake. And if there's any more background on those, I'd like it. Where the neighbors gonna punch each other, you know, things like this. This is, this is part of our job to promote harmony and things like that, okay? That's, those are my comments.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, uh, there's a four tag meeting down at the Moos Lodge that I had, I'm just gonna make a comment out of that, apologize. Um, regarding that, let me just give it some context I was gonna give at the front of the meeting, and that is that, um, as, as all of you will recall, um, fairly soon after I was at the city, I think I was here for about eight months maybe, um, election season was upon us, and signs cropped up all over the city, in the public right of way, near the public right of way, too many, all sorts of complaints from both sides about violations of the sign ordinance, and, uh, and we ended up going out there and having the police round up all the signs that were in the public right of way, bring it back to, to the parking lot behind City Hall, called the two campaigns and say, come get your stuff. And that went over like a level, and so we're not gonna do that. Um, uh, but we're in election season again. And it's primary season, March third, Super Tuesday, and cities already received complaints regarding signs. And part and parcel with the complaints, we received not only that sign is out of or, out of regulation, but why don't we look at the sign ordinance? And, uh, and Chair has, has picked this up, and I, and I appreciate it because it's, it's time. Um, the, the only other thing I would add is that we have, uh, since the election, last election, we have instituted a code enforcement ordinance, uh, to our code, that actually gives us the tools to enforce. Leader or not, before that, it was a fairly blunt tool that we had, uh, uh, and now we have a, a citation, hundred dollar citation for a first violation that goes up from there, uh, and, uh, and we have appeals hearing officers, we have processes for appeals. We have cited, uh, we've cited signs, we've cited for other things. We've had the appeals process used. It's a great mechanism, it works. Uh, I'm not a terribly huge fan of, of that tool, uh, but if we ask, and we give a reasonable amount of time for, for occurring of, of a violation, and it's not done, the city now has some tools that we didn't have before. And so I provide that as context, uh, to you and, and answer to your, to your questions.
Thank you.
Just curious, just to ask, um, as a councilman, I go, how he didn't receive the citation or, and, and by the way, I support him when he signs up, but they are out of, I mean, clearly out of several, uh, by, I mean, several aspects of current ordinance, so.
So are the twenty-five homes with no road, Y O R O.
And, and those need to come down, right?
Couldn't agree more.
If it ain't worth forty-seven days. So I think, I think he's, sixty, we need to let people know that, I don't think they know that.
Well, we didn't.
We, we didn't know.
Yeah.
So I think, I think those, the, the difference is those people don't know that they're running, I think once they're built it, they will bring them down.
Right.
I think the, the difference, I was just curious.
Yeah, so, uh, so without, without getting into, into particulars, when we're told about a specific code violation, we approach the, the resident, notify them of the violation, give them a reasonable amount of time to cure, and it's not cured, we cite, we have done it.
And I, I, I support you, I think it, um, and I think it's good for, for me to figure out how we would word out to the, uh, the no road, Y O R O, so I don't think they realize that, I think most people are thinking of implosion signs, like candidate signs.
Right.
I don't think they realize that they don't need them that, so.
Well, I'm open to your ideas about how best to inform the public, I really am. Uh, I think we want to do that.
I, I.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, thanks.
And that's a perfect case for, I'm, my vote goes in favor of minimizing that kind of, um, and, and again, you know, it's my opinion, but my perspective is minimizing that's, that small stuff. I don't think we need that in our community. Uh, we, um, at some point, yes, I know we need something, but at, at the bottom line, who really cares? I mean, is it really that bad that we would get to a point where we would call it blight? That's my point. Blight is a very, to me, that's a very significant and serious word. There are very few things that I would consider.
Freeway might have been blight.
You're not, in the last election.
But, but we don't have that, so.
Yeah, so that's minimize, minimize, be cautious.
And I think it goes along with the amendment aspect that it, in the courts as well. If, you, if you're called on it, and you say, no, no, we're, we're not your banking, we're your first member, right? This is a pretty broad, you know, you know, window of what you can, can't do, so just like, stay in this window, you're fine. And your rights are free.
And that's, I, I always run up against that problem when I talk to people, you know, they argue that, why, there's a, there's a line, you know, we unfortunately have to draw a line somewhere, you know, minimize, well, that's a pretty big word, you know. I think we ought to, uh, another thing that you were talking about setbacks and so forth, to make it simple, I think we ought to, because we live in a very diverse, I think we ought to say, like, the sign should be two meters back, it should be a map, make it simple.
Just buy it from the street, just make it from the street and just, just.
No metric. No metric, basically.
Any other comments on this, you know, permission? Okay, I've seen a couple of citizens come in, and I thank you so much for being here. And at this point, uh, I will open it up to public comment. So if you have any comments you'd like to express or add, please feel free to just comment.
Good evening. My name is Douglas McKenzie, I live in Sausalito, Oregon. And I have a few comments. I do, uh, support the commission updating this ordinance because I think in particular, section four of seventeen fifty-nine to twenty, that refers to at least five feet from any property line, is they can have this, number one. Number two, I think, referring to the same five feet from any property, and it's absurd that I would have to put a sign five feet behind my front fence as we do. Third thing, I, we, Alex and I were extremely upset when y'all came and personally, you know, Alex and I composed a new downfield, uh, it was not in any public space, ranking us on our front fence. So for that reason, if for no other reason, I support you all. Thinking a very clear way to put the fence, thank you.
Thank you, Douglas, appreciate that. Any other public comments? Bringing back to the commission, are there any other comments or?
Yeah, just, uh, just a reminder too, because, uh, I know we've done a lot of the size, maybe replacement, you know, property line, but the issue of being in the fence on the side of your house, because currently, uh, there's, you know, like, no fence, but the no, and why, you know what I mean? I mean, again, county, the artist is on the fence, but not hurting anyone, you know, it's not, lives or, only fence. And so, I think that's just, keep in mind, that might be something we want to look at, maybe we're over regulating that aspect of it.
Yeah, and maybe, just, just my final shot, is maybe we put in something in there that, and I think it may already be in there in essence, is that, you know, there's an exception to every rule. You want a five thousand square foot sign up in your yard, come into the planning commission, get your permit, um, or whatever, and come in and, and we'll vote on it and see what we think. Because I think for every rule, there must be exceptions, and we should be able to, to, um, allow things that were, at first blush, we're like, we didn't, we didn't think about that.
Or at least allow them a mechanism or requesting, I think that's.
Yeah, so.
It has to be more than eighty square feet or sixteen feet for one sign or whatever, whatever we come up with. Here's the mechanism for coming in and asking for something.
And I think that's.
And then we, we may or may not say yes, right, but at least there's a way they can ask.
Well, it's a variance.
Yeah, well, that, that's exactly what it is.
Ten dollars per square foot or.
Do you think, but, but you think that applies to the signs, uh, that it's a bit more?
Okay, but it's varied, so, you know, um, back to the map, you know, the pictures and things, that, that's the way, that's the way we need it.
And, and, and background on why, uh, why it's a safe, um, no sign on the fence?
No. Now, the only thing I can dig up is the aesthetic interest or traffic safety. If that has on a corner or something, a fence, a sign on a fence block with you, it's a helping safety.
Yeah, and just to be clear, it doesn't say you can't, the, on the fence, but it says it has to be on the house, which is something that's not allowed, so. But that's it, again, something we might be, could address.
I don't think there should be a fee for asking for those things, by the way.
Okay, just to give you some perspective, and I'll use Monterey as the comparison because Cornell is for the most part silent on the ordinance. In Delray Oaks, the size that a resident is allowed is eight square feet, which would equal two of the standard two-by-two signs, or one two-by-four sign, one of the bigger ones. So, that's where we stand in terms of overall size that a resident is able to have on the property. By comparison, and Gary mentioned it, it's eighty square feet in Monterey, and to give you a perspective on that, that would be five four-by-four signs and twenty two-by-two signs. So if somebody wanted to max out their area on their property, that's what that would look like. Monterey only allows freestanding signs, and I don't know why that's the case, but in Delray Oaks, ours must be freestanding, except for, as residents, you can have it outside of a window, let's say inside, it's outside of a window, or the wall of a building. So it doesn't mention any fences, those are the only two, two places on fixed structure.
You're in the middle of Air Force, it's everybody you can do, yeah.
Now, in terms.
May is permissive, I make that point up.
Excuse me?
The word may is permissive.
Oh, okay, thank you. Now, in terms of time, and we get on that, court says sixty days prior to the event and five days after the event, no more than sixty-five total.
So, and I think that's where we get to the, the no road, Y O R O. There's no event, really, I mean, I guess you might, maybe the first one came up, that was suitable then, but there really is no event, but it's still sixty-five would, would fall, okay?
Now, Monterey says forty-seven days after you post it in the ground, and that by definition is a temporary sign. So that's how they approach that. And I asked the planner in Monterey, why forty-seven days? Kind of seems arbitrary, and she couldn't give an answer to why forty-seven. Honestly, why not forty-five?
Maybe it's a tall number, you remember?
Excuse me?
It's an answer to you, I don't know.
And, and that could be the case. Um, so that gives you a, a perspective of time and size. The other thing too is commercial properties. Within Delray Oaks, we specify size or overall square footage on commercial properties, whereas Monterey says it's the same rules as a residential property. So in our particular case, it gets somewhat confusing because they talk about commercial properties that are either over four thousand square feet of vacant area and those that are under. And it has different requirements based on size of that vacant lot on this commercial property. The other thing that makes it real interesting is in Delray Oaks, we have specific requirements for any commercial property that faces two eighteen or sixty-eight. So any type of sign that is put up in accordance with our regulation right now, put up on any commercial property or in and around a commercial property that faces one of those highways, they need a permit. So that might be something that we could potentially take a look at.
You have a question about that? Is there, are there any state or county ordinances that, uh, that apply to the state highway?
Interesting.
They're both things, they're both things.
Yeah. If in extent that the, the Harrah Ann article, then you could regulate signs on state, state highway property. And likewise, their, their building, they regulate a stop at the, at the road where it's showing over there, right? I think it's, you know.
I couldn't say with absolute confidence of details and specifics, but I'm sure there are, there are similar to what we have outlined here, simulation, animation, rotation, anything that would cause distraction to any drivers compromising on safety. Was there a problem with people putting up a fence along two eighteen? I thought at some point, Al friend was upset with people putting up a fence without a permit.
Oh.
That was strange.
I don't know, somebody, I was waiting.
It was, sorry, there was something going on, I can hear you right. Sorry, was the chief just reminding me, I had a, a plumber, meant some work out there, put up a temporary fence?
Oh, okay.
And, and they didn't, part of that, they weren't on the right, we didn't work.
Okay, well, maybe it is that, because Al friend was complaining about the fence. I don't understand.
Now, taking those items into consideration, what, what I would like to do is at the next planning commission meeting, agendaize the sign ordinance again, recommend to staff that you take a look at some particular aspects of the ordinance, both from a regulatory standpoint and a legal standpoint. And focus in, if I'm hearing everybody, uh, here and also in the public, focus in on size, overall size that is allowed in the city. And from what I'm gathering, allowing more sign space, more square footage is something that we lean towards allowing. So maybe it's in reducing the amount of square footage that we currently allow from eight square feet to, to maybe something that's more consistent with what Monterey, like ten, or temporary signs. And that's the other aspect of it. I think it's probably best to approach this as Monterey has, in terms of calling these particular signs temporary signs. I think that makes a lot of sense from a legal aspect. It also eliminates any permit issues that are out there, where somebody thinks, oh, I gotta get a permit for a particular sign. So if by definition it's a temporary sign, then it's got its own category, it's treated that way, and we put, uh, a, a time limit on, on those temporary signs. And whether it's the amount of time that we currently have specified in our regulation is sixty-five days or forty-seven. is sixty-five days, or forty-seven days, like Monterey, or something in between, maybe staff can take a look at that as well. Also.
And just know where the DRO sign, they've talked about how long they've been, how many of them are up, is in violation of that, and depending if you look at it based on the person that put up the sign, or the message.
So potentially looking also at the message of the board itself, I think we get into a First Amendment issue there, but some things might be offensive, is that what you're?
No, I'm talking about the, the number of signs and the area, the total area of the time.
There's mostly one, there's a couple people that have two, I think, I've seen, but most people only have one.
It is true, same, and I'm just getting here also, that would fall on individual property.
Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah.
I can just ask for clarification, I think, are you suggesting that we, that they, that the ordinance revision wants to continue to address total area?
Well, I'm, I'm just asking a question, I didn't. I just wondered about, if we get into another situation, signs like that, is it, is it individual, they have to sign up, or is it?
Yeah, I think that's probably what's, any person's individual properties, I think they have the right to put up their sign, whatever, when it's, you fill that. I don't think it would aggravate, no, they're all different properties.
Political signs, maybe they all, if somebody decided one person's on a run career, but they have the same sign in a different job.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not quite.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's the message, and, yeah, it's sort of getting back to, the person, is the person who's posting the sign, or is it the message? So we have the no road, DRO, and we have our, our being square feet, all of the signs, that's up to.
But if they're all in, but if they're all like this one or two, they're under the eight square feet per yard, then, then they're, I don't think, yeah.
Seems to be the person posting it, or is it the message?
Yeah, I think it's the home, I don't think you could go out there, you couldn't go, it'd be like one after a candidate, but you'd be signed, I don't, I don't think you're gonna do it.
Yeah, the way the ordinance is geared now, it's towards the property itself. So that's, that's, the size is based on, well, in our case, it's residential and commercial, but it is the actual property.
I suspect you probably have a pretty uphill battle from the.
Really?
Yeah, no, I'm not saying, I'm, no, I'm totally saying, I think that would be marketing first, I mean, honestly.
Maybe also ask staff to take a look at the five-foot property line issue that's there, realizing that that's variable throughout the city, what five feet means in one place might not mean in the other. And even if we want to have a property line setback, as, as it was mentioned, Douglas mentioned that maybe, maybe that doesn't make any sense, but take a look at, at that particular aspect of it. Also, the commercial property requirements with the four thousand square feet being greater than or less than, and if it faces two eighteen, maybe looking at that to see if that still makes sense. And then, the freestanding aspects of the sign, right now we have it as, we can fix it on to a side of the house or outside of the window, you have one freestanding only.
What kind of window would not be so big with a house? Is that?
Well, I think maybe if you had, if you had a building, a garage, and it's a hall window, you could put it on the, on the wall.
Outside of the one you said.
Detached, like, you could put it on the wall, if you have, I think maybe that's what.
Mention on the outside of the window.
Yes, on the outside, yeah.
Would be the difference, inside and outside.
I know.
It would.
Can't be inside though.
And as part of the revision, I think it was, they recommended that maybe we include a chart, like Monterey has, I think that's easy to follow, where it's categorized as a temporary sign, and it shows a chart of all the other signs, so you can differentiate between. And I, I think using pictures as well to show examples, I think would be helpful. Maybe take a look at the handheld signs, someone had mentioned that as well, that that's an aspect of the ordinance that maybe we want to include as well as particular type, or signs on vehicles and trailers. So, did I, did I capture everything? Is there any other item more, any other issue that maybe we should have staff look at?
Well, I'm just saying, if we're looking at it, and the idea of the setback, where you can put them, if we liberalize that in a sense of making it more, like, less restricted, like the, they're your property, they're your property, just keep it out of the street. I do think though, that there may be, and there's some kind of a public safety aspect, especially if we're gonna allow the larger signs, you know, the sixteen square foot sign, you know, like, I'm on a corner, wouldn't that be a good idea for me to put up a sixteen square foot sign right on my corner, if it's, if it's a, I do think there is a public safety aspect of this, and that might be a little squishy, a little bit delicate call, but I think, you know, Chief and his, his officers could probably, I think, be able to make that call. I just think that's important, if we are gonna loosen that up, you know, you're talking, I was thinking, then on my house, like, that would not be a good idea, we could put a little giant sixteen square foot sign, because it's blocked, you know?
Just doing that, maybe, you know, a couple of people to go out and, back to, a picture is worth a thousand words. Here's what's legal, here's what's not, have it on one page, and just be in a binder, ladies and, you know, staff, just go, this is legal and this is not.
And very similar to what's distributed with, you know, the blocks for building permits.
Correct, yeah.
Flanking for certain permit, you know, there are illustrative examples.
I think that's great, I think you still have to get it in code, but I think, I do think, I think that's great, I can, it doesn't show people, yeah.
Yeah. Be the binder next to the code room.
Yeah, absolutely.
Back to, be the simple.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
Not to put it on the staff, but we can, maybe a couple of people just could do that.
The design thing, you're just supposed to go and.
Yeah. I mean, that screen right there may not be eight by ten, something fairly close, so that's eighty square foot right there. You could use that, you could project up there on that thing, and just say, and here's a little, here's, here's the other option, and here's the other option, I mean, it's that easy, you don't have to actually bring me the props, you just.
Yeah.
Well, that's what a book would be, really.
Yeah, a book would be, not any stuff.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, so you had recommended to staff that if a particular instance should be a five-foot mark up front, but we are, we're seeing that as four feet, and it's, you said that there's some variance in property lines, but typically, city property ends, and private property begins four feet from back at current on any lot that I could imagine in the city this time.
Well, not necessarily, I'll use my house as an example, on the edge of the street, from the edge of the street, my parking line doesn't start for another ten, twelve feet back.
Really?
Yes. And along Portola, houses on my side are consistent with that, and, and from what I've.
That's how we make Portola wider, fix that box.
Well, and that's, and, and that's part of the, the rationale behind it is, because we don't have sidewalks, that allows room for potential putting in sidewalks, and also for emergency vehicles, I was told as well, and, you know, you've got that plus the utilities that are put in those particular areas.
Okay, so, again, now we're back to the, with this, maybe we come up with something common sense of, keep it out of the street, don't want traffic, and just keep it simple, right?
I think your point about safety.
You always, you have it as safe.
And, and so I think maybe staff can come up with something that gives a setback off the street, because that's really what we're looking at.
Just the standard that falls within those.
And use maybe a street as a, as a marker.
You might run into the problem back to the fence, so many houses around, the fences are within that city known property.
Right.
And, and I wanna put a sign up, I wanna put it on the backside, nobody can see it, so I'm gonna put it on the side. Please go around and say, you're too close, well, wait a minute, your, your fence is in city property.
Yeah.
Now you need a conditional use permit, get a permit.
So we might have, we might, we might.
So.
Yeah. Don't want to make a ten-foot standard of nine, if we're adding it up here, would make it easier for reinforcements, you know, would just kind of cut the gray area out of, say, my front yard, Vito Verde, where I do have forty-eight inches, and then it's very clear, versus Carlton Estates, which has the span of the front yard, but ten feet from the curb, no closer, this is a.
I think you're gonna get a lot of pushback.
Yeah, you're gonna get a lot of pushback.
You're gonna get a lot of pushback, and tell people they can't put a sign within ten feet of the street.
Yeah.
We're gonna have them in city councils, we're gonna have them here lined up.
Because we're.
Well, but, what they were enforcing was the easement, and, and that was, so, so, but, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if you tell people they can't put it within ten feet of the street, they're gonna be lined up out the door, not happy about that, and, I mean, we, we don't, we didn't.
It'd be a line by the fence, no, we don't know.
Yeah.
All great points, I think if staff takes a look at it with an eye towards safety, and making it as consistent and simplistic as possible, we'll see, maybe there's a solution to that, and it is what we. So, what I would hope we can do, because the election season is upon us, and I don't want too much time to go by, because I know potential issues will start stacking up, and, and I think if we're gonna do a revision to the ordinance, we should do it fairly soon because of that.
Right.
I, I would ask staff to take a look at what was discussed, and potentially take into account those suggestions and those issues that we identified, and maybe provide a, a draft, revise ordinance for us to take a look at at the, at the next planning commission meeting. With an eye towards ultimately getting it before the council can love to get the order.
And please insert key changes, things that are different from the old stuff, if you have, as you're going along.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Commissioners, thank you, General.
Really looking forward to attending the lead of California City's Planning Commissioners Academy in about three weeks, and you'll also go to find out, George is gonna be driving with me, so that should be exciting. I'm just really looking forward to.
I'm gonna go Wednesday night.
So much knowledge, and gaining more experience, maybe myself could be a sharper tool to, you know, be of whatever positive contribution I can do to our good city here. I'll bring the beer and peanuts.
Any other commissioners plan on attending?
I'm going on Wednesday, I can't go all three days, I'm going on Wednesday night, so I'll be the Thursday.
And I'll be there as well.
I'm trying to go.
Any other announcements? Okay, our next meeting is Wednesday, March eleventh, at six P M, meeting adjourned.
I was, what's that, spinning?
A ton of people.